So it's five o'clock. How many to order? Johns, here. Tyler?
Here.
Wolf, here. Okay, is there anything that we need to add or move from the agendas?
I just need to superintend plus, plus part.
Oh, okay. Anything else?
Can we add on your business, just to discuss continuing to stream it back in person?
Yeah, I was gonna talk about that in their, um, that time before we. So what's that? We continue to streaming.
Posting, I guess we're not even streaming.
Right, oh yeah, posting. Okay, um, then I will move on if that's it. We'll move on to the approval of the September 8th regular meeting minutes. Did I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the September 8th regular meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Johns?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Wolf, yes. Okay, uh, we do have someone from the community wants just to address the audience. So I invite Amanda Duescher to speak.
Thank you. As you can see from the agenda, my name is Amanda Duescher. I'm a parent of two students at Suri School and wish to ask some questions regarding the new absence policy put in place for the 2021-2022 school year. Number one, what is the reasoning for Suri School removing parents and guardians from the decision-making process regarding excused and unexcused absences? Not only does this remove parents from control over their students, but it does not follow the North Dakota Sentry Code. North Dakota Sentry Code, Chapter 15, 1 dash 20 dash 02 point 1, titled Attendance Determination Policies. Section 1 reads, "To be deemed an attendance for purposes of this chapter is students to be allowed to absent from school without excuse for more than 21 class periods." As a reminder, Suri's current policy has that listed at 12 for the school year, 1.75 times less than the Sentry Code. Section 2 further states that the board of each school district and governing body of each non-public school shall adopt a policy that will define an excused absence as any absence from school if that absence is supported by a written verbal or written agreement applied by the student's parent, teacher, or school administrator. Again, Suri has deliberately removed the student's parent from the discussion. The Sentry Code states that a verbal or written absence from a parent is an excused absence. Number two. Long before March 2020, public health has encouraged staying home when sick to keep contagious disease contained. Yet under the current absence policy, Suri School no longer considers a sick day an excused absence. Even ignoring the fact that we are still in the midst of a global pandemic, what is the reason for wanting students to be in school when they are sick? It can be detrimental to another person's health to send them to school. And sometimes impossible, take a stomach bug, for instance. And not every illness requires a visit to the doctor. According to the absence policy, time lost from class is irretrievable, particularly a student's opportunity for interaction and exchange of ideas with teachers. Most ill people are not cognitively aware of their crime. Therefore, they're not interacting and exchanging ideas as normal with their teachers and peers, even if they are in class. This policy is creating a culture that requires six students to be in school, potentially spreading contagious disease and creating undue stress on an ill individual. Number three. Taken directly from the Suri School website regarding the new absence policy, part of the change is because, unfortunately in the past, we've had students missing 30 or more days a year. This policy is specifically designed to address this issue and is a step in the right direction. In 2009, the North Dakota Legislature updated Senate Bill 2217 regarding compulsory attendance and truancy. All school building personnel is to submit annual truancy data to DPI by June of each year. Truancy includes more than 21 missed class periods in a year, which is the month set by the North Dakota Sentry Code. If there's an issue of students missing more than 30 days of school a year, that should be reported to DPI. Is that happening? And why is Suri School punishing the entirety of the student body for something that should already be taken care of by the school administration and the API? If students are missing 30 days of school, I assume setting the bar at six days is immediately much different for those individuals. Number four. Also taken directly from the school website, where did the six days of the new policy come from? Every student in our building can apply for a $6,000 college scholarship from the state of North Dakota. There are certain requirements in class that they must take and greatly must meet during qualifying. One of the requirements is 95% attendance, which is six days or less absences per semester. There is no doubt this is an impactful scholarship for students pursuing higher education. And this opportunity should be communicated to a student in a parental box. However, is it qualifying for this scholarship the responsibility of the students and the parents? Again, the school is not just using parents. They already have parents and guardians. In addition, the North Dakota Central Skills Scholarship requires several things, including a nine-week career of education in the middle counseling, a four-year rolling plan, passing a North Dakota civics test, and earning a 3.0 or higher overall GPA. Suri School does not offer all of these additional criteria. Also, the 95% of attendance that has been deemed so important is not actually one of the required criteria. By items that previously listed are required, as are four more additional indicators plus two more choice-ready components. The attendance rule is one of the eight additional indicators. Number five. The absence policy now includes an absence buyback procedure where students can buy back their missed time after six absences from class. This policy states that they will be made up 45 minutes for each missed class period. However, nowhere in the Suri Public Schools professional negotiated agreement created June 1, 2021, is that listed as part of the teacher's school day? In fact, Article 7 states, "The school day for the classroom teachers shall be from one half hour prior to the opening until one half hour after dismissal of regular classes." How is it possible for teachers to enable students to fulfill their 45 minutes for missed classes when there are only half-hour increments around school, around school hours that they are legally contracted to be in the school? And as I'm sure you all know, expectations put on teachers cannot be added to during the school year because Article 8, Section A, titled Effective Contract reads, "Said terms and conditions may not be altered, changed, added to, deleted from, or modified without the mutual consent of the parties of the amendment, written, attached, and made part of this contract." Was it Amendment 8? If not, how will students pick up their time in 45-minute increments when the teachers did not send a contract to be in the school for that long or to even fulfill this specific program? Well, there are more points that can and should be brought up, and realized and allowed by Menmark's past improvement. With that in mind, thank you for the opportunity to speak on some issues that need to be resolved regarding the new Suri School absence policy, specifically the removal of parents' ability to excuse their students' sick days of being unexcused absences, punishing the entire student body for truing individuals, and expecting teachers to fulfill the 45-minute buyback program when that is not included in the contract.
Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. I really appreciate that. This was really well put together.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, scholarships to give back. That's great. Do they want any questions for?
No questions.
Okay, um, so because this is not a public forum, but a board in a public meeting, um, I'm going to ask that we add this to the agenda maybe for the following meetings so we can kind of digest this and go through some of this information. And we can revisit that policy. It's from information tables. Thank you very much. So, look, I think that's my.
And then do my questions get answered now?
No, I, I, I'm not prepared to answer them now. I think that we have to.
I haven't seen that procedural that you need to answer those questions.
No, I'm not required to respond to you in any way.
Okay.
And so, no, I.
Did you send me the whatever article or whatever that states that later?
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Yep. And so if you want me to look it up too, I will make a note to do it.
Okay.
But if it's under, it's under the North Dakota Attorney General Office, under open board meetings.
Okay.
So we're actually not even required to hear in public, but we choose to because we really got you and I think you've raised some points. But I can't be prepared to answer something that, you know, you're just presenting to me, so.
All right.
Thank you. Just remind me to do updates. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I think that's great. Okay. Um, so I am going to maybe take a minute to digest this over the next month and kind of add this to the. I don't know if this is going on in a business or new business, um, or next month's agenda. That's, um, no, I agree with that.
I would say new business is, and there's a public comment right now, so if I consider.
Sure. Okay. So that's new business for next meeting. Thank you. Okay, um, is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Okay. What, do you want to speak as faculty member or who allowed to leave that up to?
Yeah, I'm a student rep.
Oh, okay, perfect. Yep, that was my next round of business as a student representative. So, yes, if a student wants to address the board, that's always great.
So, as student council advisor, I just wanted to check out some student council members and represent board in this one.
Sounds like it. Okay.
Oh, okay. That's awesome. So what I was saying is as student council advisor, I wanted, um, some student council members to represent the student member position. And Maddie is a senior and has been in student council for four years. So she has great perspective on how the school year is going so far. So I thought she could share her ideas.
Love to hear from you. Thank you.
My name is Maddie Warner. I'm a senior student in the department. And I'm just here to speak on some of the students of Suri School. I just wanted to bring up positives. I've seen around Suri High School this year from my perspective. Um, starting off, the student involvement this year has been increasingly like better and better. And I've just seen so many more opportunities for students to get involved in the school. Some examples are our new FFA with art and teacher versus kids, Mustang Minute and Photography, different classes with Ms. Richard, Art Club with Ms. Brant and Drama with Mrs. Markey and Mrs. Torn. Um, I've seen a lot of undergrads and deep upperclassmen enroll in these activities. And it's really brought about in a comfort zone. I think that's really amazing. It's amazing to see that we didn't have these opportunities in previous years. So while there's something for everyone, I think it's really amazing to see how happy it's made these students. Um, another thing is the school and how they're trying to keep us safe with COVID. Um, and this is coming from a student who struggled academically and mentally during the pandemic. Um, I really appreciate the staff that's doing their absolute best under the circumstances they're given. Um, just some examples, solving problems given to their attention as fast as they can. Um, the lunch ladies providing nutritious meals always even when certain items aren't out ordered. Um, there's been lots of one-on-one between, um, students and teaching and staff members. Um, especially when students have struggles or concerns in the school, they are always open to listening and they'll. And they always are there to listen and have little thoughts for us to go there. They're always having a bad day or anything. And that's really amazing. And then. And then finally, um, the parents, I've seen them firsthandly go above and beyond for our school and the students. Um, not even the students that they teach, but other students as well. I've seen them give their all to students in the school. And I think that's really amazing to see, um, secondhand because it really shows the like openness of Suri. And although some people have disagreements about the school, I feel like ultimately this year has really made a positive impact on students and teachers. And I think it's, I'm very grateful for the opportunities and the impact the teachers and staff and faculty have made on the students and the school.
Thank you. I just want to say I really appreciate you coming up here. I think that would be really difficult. I don't know if I could have done that as a senior high school, so good job.
Thank you.
No questions for the students.
Yeah, I, no, no questions. Anybody else just make it up. Um, other than the other students or if there are also a couple of faculty who might have seen that on the agenda. So if there's any faculty that would like to address the board.
We have Mr. Howford there to talk about attendance policy.
Sure.
Well, Amanda, thank you for coming in. Um, I know that wasn't, wasn't easy. I'm feeling the same way, so.
Close it.
Bye. Close it.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, well, I, uh, this is something that we talked about this summer as a staff. And we went over and it's something the staff was pretty passionate about. In the packet I gave you is the new policy, the old policy, and also a copy of the Sentry Code. Uh, the part that you pointed out in your presentation of the Sentry Code where it defines an excused absence as referring to a parent needing to call and notify the school if your kid is gone, whether it's a doctor's appointment or they're sick, right? We just, it is, is a precautionary for the school. We need to know where they're, we are responsible for those children. The next part is number three on page one of that, Document Three, uh, says this chapter does not preclude a school district or non-public school from withholding credit, removing a student from a course, or taking other punitive measures against student who does not arrive in timely fashion or who exceeds a specific number of absences as determined by the school district or non-public school. So we, we did, I did check. In fact, I gave the presentation last spring at the school and we went over the Sentry Code. The other sheet, I believe I put in there the little chart in the back. And it kind of lists the differences between the old policy and the new policy. Our old policy had a maximum days of seven. Our new policy has a maximum days of six. Okay? Our old policy had no excused forgivable absences. That means if you went to the doctor for that day, it went toward your seven. Our current policy says if you go to the doctor, it doesn't count toward your six if you go for a funeral visit. If you have an extended illness, if you end up with guano and the doctor says you're home for four weeks or six weeks, that does not go toward your six. If you're over the limit, our policy said you had a one-hour detention per day. This was part of the vagueness that we wanted to fix. The new policy says there's a possible loss of credit. The old policy had no buyback procedure. The new policy says there is a buyback procedure and it's per class list. Um, I did just another quick search just of some area schools. Um, Ned Rhodes actually has 10 days per semester. TGU says their three days a quarter is actually about the same as us. Um, Southbury is 10 days per semester. And they do five hours of detention for any day over. Flensburg is 10 per semester. And actually, they don't, they don't, a lot of these schools don't have that sick, I'm sorry, like the doctor visit allowance. So even if you go over for a doctor visit, you'll have to make that up at Flensburg. And Berthold was also 10 days per semester. I guess I kind of addressed item number one. Uh, item number two is talking about the sickness. And yes, that's a valid concern, kids coming to school not feeling well. Like I said in the message on that one on our website, I was hoping I'd never have to mention the word COVID again, except in the historical sites. But that unfortunately did not happen. Kids who have tested positive or who have been in close contact, all those days are not counted against. We, we, I mean, we would prefer they stay home. So we are working with those families. As far as making up time with teachers, they actually have a 30-minute time in the morning and a 30-minute time in the afternoon. So a student can make up 30 minutes in the morning and 15 minutes after school. So it still fits into that time slot. I'm not making teachers stay extra. That's not what we're trying to do. And yes, you are correct. There is eight prerequisites, I'm trying to find here, on the North Dakota Scholarship. And that, you gotta get the essential skills before you can move on to the next step. And the 95 percentile is one of those steps. The more that we get kids to apply and check off that list, the better. Not every kid that did 25 hours of community service or taken a career exploration experience, um, things like that. So whatever we can do to help those students out. Okay, I think I kind of addressed, I addressed all the main points.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Howford?
I don't at this point. I just need to kind of discuss everything that you've said, take into account everything that Amanda has said. I think we just need to discuss it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
I want to ask one first question. I'm just wondering, because as far as I'm meaning this scholarship requires is, um, you have to have a 24 on the ACT to get this scholarship? Because you have to have a second, a third, or a fourth, or you have to choose two of those. And so I think that there's no way to get around a 24 on the ACT. And what's the significance if students actually have a 24 on the ACT? I'd like to know. I'm just curious because we're automatically, most of these kids are automatically, from their ACT scores, are not going to be high enough to meet these requirements.
You have to get two of them free components.
Yeah, and two of them require 24 on the ACT.
Okay, I added that onto that bullet point, but, or.
I've been curious. I don't know that, I don't have ACTs yet. I just would want.
I added it to that, to that 4B as something to look at. Again, I'm not familiar with it, with the scholarship, so I'm just basing it on the information that was given to me.
I have a question. Has the actual old policy ever been enforced? And why, was the old policy ever actually enforced?
I believe so. I don't know if you see so.
I can tell you it hasn't because my children race year-round. We race dirt bikes. We leave Fridays early and multiple students in our school race as an extra pick here and it's good for my kids and their mental health and everything. We leave Fridays almost every week, all through the summer and winter seasons, multiple times a month. And I've gotten letters in the mail stating your child's EBT or this, but never has she been at her six-hour class or a seven-hour class, either of my children's, throughout the entire year, most of the year. And I've never been punished for this. I've never been threatened to lose a credit for my child that has better than a 3.0 as a straight A student that deals with health issues. And this is the reason I'm here. I've been working with faculty, but when kids are homesick, we shouldn't have to take them to a doctor to prove that they're sick. I think parents know when we have a stomach ache. And I'm just saying, I think it would be our right, which is our right, to be able to make those decisions while we're keeping our children home.
Thank you, Amanda. Um, again, we'll take this under advisement.
I have one more question, too. I know you said the contract, you can fill it before and after school, but is it actually in their contract that they have to fulfill the buyback program? I'm assuming not because this was created after the contract was signed. So how can we legally request teachers to teach their class again to students when that was never required?
I don't know, Mr. K, do you want to address that or?
Mr. Howford, can you, what's the plan for the buyback?
That would, it would be served either that 30 minutes before or the 30 minutes after school.
Right.
As far as meeting the, the contract of the teachers, they're, they're required to be here at those times. They're required to work with their students at those times.
They're required to fulfill the buyback requirement.
I think you answered your question. They're required to be here during that time. And as far as I understood, this policy was brought forward by the school, by the.
So it's a distinction, not a learning period. So they're not learning what they.
I don't know why you would say that. And again, this is not a public forum, so we are past this point. Um, we will address this, this at the next meeting. Okay, um, I think if there is no faculty that wishes to speak, then we'll move on to superintendent.
Okay, in front of you, you have policy A, B, C, or policy. This is a new policy this year, virtual learning because of weather or other conditions. Um, this is something that if we were to have a storm that our school's out for a week, that we could, provide distance learning to students. If we have a boiler go out that we're out extended periods of time, that we can go distance learning with them. If we do not have this policy in place, we would not be able to do that. This is recommended by the School Board Association to have this policy. Since it's new, I'm bringing it up to you to see what your thoughts are. I don't think that this is intended, my intention would never be use this for one day of out of school. Um, we wouldn't have our books at home. We wouldn't be prepared to do this. However, if there was tornado or like I said, something with a boiler or a pipe that would break and we were out extended, we would, um, have to make up that time. So if we can get the students learning when they're out of school, that's probably what we would like to do.
Yeah, I read through the policy. Um, it's not that I find things wrong with it. I just, you know, I don't see it ever being used. Um, just because if there's bad weather, I surely don't want to expect the teachers to be able to teach from home or, or anything like that. So I don't, I don't know that it's necessary, but.
I thought we had a policy for virtual learning or was that just?
That was more forward.
I don't think it would hurt anything to have it implemented. We could, we could modify it a little bit. If you thought that would be more beneficial, like after a certain amount of days or for a certain reason, like just building maintenance. Um, situations or such type of. Right?
I don't think it hurts to have the policy if there's for some reason you couldn't use it. Wifi was completely out of there, that kind of stuff, um, you know, technological issues. What I need to do is have a, have a terrible blizzard and us have the ability to do something. Just have to tag on a week or two of the end of school year. It's just, I mean, it isn't that we have to do something. It just kind of lays out how we do it if we miss that tool.
This is something that we would adopt tonight.
You'd have to have a first reading and then a second reading.
You know, we do have two board members with things. And with that, um, I know that you have the three of us to make a quorum. But, um, I think with any new policy adoption, it'd be. But I think with any new policy adoption, it'd be better if it had more, more thoughts and opinions on it, especially if that's something that's pressing like this. So I would like to put this under unfinished business for next week.
I agree. I'd like a little more time to just digest what this is.
Okay, my next item, because I've been downloading all the board policies from the North Dakota School Board Association. And while I was doing that, I noticed that I would like to get a board policy committee together, maybe two board members and myself, to go through the board policies and then bring it to the board, what we suggest. I know that the two board members are not here, so we can wait till next month to decide on a committee. However, I will keep downloading those policies and making them ready for us when we do meet.
That'd be great. Yeah, I think that's a really great project, an important one. And yeah, I think maybe next time it'd be, we have a full board to play.
Okay, my next agenda item is the bus barn. Chuck Van, our head maintenance custodian, and I are brought to you last board meeting about remodeling the bus barn so we could use it all winter, heated electricity. We both feel that we should bring it up to the vision committee when we do meet. However, we're not sure when that committee's going to meet, plus it's going to take quite a bit of time to make a plan. So we're discussing this week, right to maybe approach the board to add the wall and insulation so Chuck can continue to work on our buses when it is cold. This last month, Chuck's been working on the buses. He saved probably three thousand dollars already this month working on our buses and equipment. So if we could continue to have him work on our equipment when, through the winter, we're just going to save money. And we're asking, like I said, the wall and insulation, we'd need about twenty-five thousand dollars to complete that project. Chuck, I know you're here. Is there anything that you would like to add?
I'm, I'm open to any questions. I think we had a pretty decent discussion about it last month, but we did get another bid on insulation. So getting bids from contractors has been a challenge. So we did finally get a framing bid, which I believe was forty-eight hundred dollars for two-by-six wall tieback and then steel liner panel, which we, we may look at modifying the steel liner panel and that could potentially save us some money just because of availability of materials. And then I spoke with B and B Insulation this week and just, I got a bid from him and it was basically within three hundred dollars of the last bid we got. So like, I think it was nineteen hundred, nineteen thousand three hundred.
Eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand three hundred. So the, really the reason that, that we decided to bring this back to you again at this point was, is that we feel like spray foam insulation is, is obviously the most efficient way to insulate that building, but it comes with, they can, it has to be forty degrees for them to be able to spray it. So we may not even be able to accomplish that yet this year, but it would be something we certainly would like to try to accomplish.
I would like to apologize for not having a vision committee meeting last month. Everything just kind of got out of control. But I would like to schedule something for this next coming week. So, I mean, I have no problem approving some funding for you now. But I would like to meet next week to talk about the rest of it, up to a certain dollar amount.
What's the difference between the fifty and the twenty-five? What are we not doing?
What's that?
What's the difference between the fifty thousand from last month and then the twenty-five this month?
So we still wouldn't have, we still wouldn't have the heaters and the electrical and the garage doors. So, and, and, and like, it's like, the, the reason that we, that we decided to approach you again is just because of we, we're going to get weather sensitive with the insulation. So we're still going to have, and Mr. Green was, you know, we, we discussed the fact that we need to get through the vision committee process before we allocated all the funds. So we just thought because of the sensitivity of the, our timeframe to try to get the project done, we just brought this report. I did get one electrical bid, it was twenty thousand dollars.
Well, doesn't that electrical have to be done before they do the spray foam?
All that would be, like, it's all surface mount. So like the conduit on the wall there, so it would be, it would be directly to the wall.
Oh, I see.
In conduit.
Okay.
So we could do the, there's some work that we would have to accomplish back there as well as the, to spread the wall. And like I said, it's, it's the time sensitive to be brought to this meeting this month.
Sure. Do you know all the price difference between the spray foam insulation and, you know, fiberglass?
To do fiberglass, we would have to actually frame the walls with that, so there's no, when you, when you do fiberglass insulation on a steel building, you do it before you put, before you put the outside pan on.
Okay.
So that would be, would obviously pass that.
Sure. So that's not even possible. Okay.
I have a few other questions. And I've talked to a couple of guys about that, if you like, with the insulation, but, I mean, it's worth the money. You're going to insulate it, you're going to insulate well, and we all are twenty-one and all are twenty-three, so it would be, again, it seals up the building very well, so I think it's a critical work. Anything else?
Mr. Green, at the last meeting, you said that there was enough to cover the full.
Yes, we do have a building fund to cover that, yes.
And that's under the capital projects?
Yes, that's right.
How much did you have to send in there? I mean, it's not about you, but I can't remember what our budget expenditure are, because we don't budget for them, so.
Budget expenditure.
Right, eighty-four thousand four seventy-two is in there right now. Right, what do we look at next? The revenue, I don't know. See, that all comes from the mill levies, right?
Like a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty to inject it.
Okay.
So that would be on top of what's here.
We've already got a few. And our budgeted, okay, we have two more monuments.
Is that correct?
And how much of those? One is sixteen, one is fifty-five. Okay, so. So really, I mean, we have just enough from our mill levies to heat our monuments, but we're budgeting a hundred and twenty, planning to spend a hundred and ten just on our monuments, then really, considering it's not eighty-five that we have, kind of squeezing capital for them? Is that right? Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, in the end, you have to sell them yourselves.
Okay. I, I am sorry about that then. Eighty-five thousand dollars is not a lot of money. And I kind of think that, I don't know if there's any point in doing, insulating the building for not having heaters in there. And we need heaters and electrical work in order to heat it. So we have eighty-four thousand in there, and that's like, that's about what we have to dip into.
I see a pretty much. Yeah, I see on, on the balance sheet, there is estimated revenue is two hundred and sixteen thousand.
Oh, two sixteen, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay. That means different. So two sixteen and we're finding.
Correct.
So that need one, one ten.
Correct.
Okay. Correct, what we've already got.
That's right, that's correct.
Okay. Well, that means that's a little bit different, sorry. No, no, I can explain yourself. Thank you. So how much are you asking for today?
It's point five thousand dollars.
That would, that would be more than not to get us the framing and the installation accomplished.
And that's what the goal of installing here, kind of layer time later this year is about here?
Well, it depends on the vision committee. We'd like to meet and discuss that.
And like I said, I am thinking next Tuesday or Wednesday, we can throw something, something together. But I'll make a motion to approve up to twenty-five thousand dollars out of the mill levy fund for the reconditioning of the bus barn.
Before I do those stats, my questions are.
Just one second, you don't have to vote in.
What? I don't know.
Somebody should be going to discuss.
Yes, we're exempting for discussions.
What's that?
Disemptment for this.
Okay, I'll second it for discussion. Out of the, so that would be less than a hundred and eighty-nine. Are we anticipating other things to come up, was there any other issues that we foresee to pay out there?
As of right now, we do not, I do not foresee other issues right now. But we never know, I don't know, first of all. Last year, we had some pipes that went out and we had those fixed and insurance paid most of that.
So, Daniel? If you're looking at the balance sheet, it has under the estimated revenue, there's a balance there of two fourteen, so that doesn't include the eighty-four. So really, our balance, if we got all of our project equity, it would be the two ninety-eight, six forty-three. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay. I just want to clarify that on you, so.
I guess my only concern with this is I think that doing it is kind of committing to doing the whole project. And I don't know that we committed to doing the whole project, but I do understand where you're coming from. You know, it's kind of like a now or wait till next year. Because like I said, there's just no point in insulating without heat.
I'm not trying to contradict what you're saying, but I, I do think being part of the elements in and in this building is much warmer. I, obviously adding the heater is going to be top of the mind, but I, I feel like it's actually making a work of condition in the winter time.
We, and the discussions we've had about heat is if we couldn't get the full heat, the all of the electrical and the heating, we could do some temporary heat out there, so at least we could utilize that space. It's, I mean, we're going to come to a point pretty quick here where it's going to be hard to work out there. And, and we have some, we definitely have some projects we need to take care of up there.
Well, it sounds like the projects you're doing are going to be stateless, Miami, in the, in the east.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's just even winter time and having those kids stare inside for stone walls a month, you're got, you know, just, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of benefits to having that space.
So to improve the money, that's all that can be used, I mean, is twenty-five enough for what you just said, is there a specific number?
Right, no, that would cover the framing and the insulation. I do believe, what was it, twenty-three?
Twenty-three, four.
Twenty-three, four would be the framing and insulation, that would be, if we had to do something else, I guess.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
No.
Three times, we're making official, any more discussion? Any more discussion? Okay, then we'll, we'll have our votes. Johns?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Wald?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Actually, I had, I had just wrote a couple down last night, just a couple of questions I wanted to ask about with the kitchen. How the, or one of the questions was the kitchen, how are you running with that and the food situation?
Our new distributor is Cisco. So we're really lucky because Cisco is not going to take another vendor. And they're not going to take another school unless you were already with them prior. U S Foods will not add any vendors this time, so we're very lucky that we have Cisco. We started ordering, ordering from them last week. First delivery was this Tuesday and we got a lot of our food, so yeah, we're very pleased with Cisco.
Oh, that's great. How are Costco?
Costco look at mine.
Like that?
No.
Perfect. Glad to hear that we've gone with that.
There's, there's schools out there that aren't relying on Costco, except for grocery stores, so we're very pleased.
Wonderful. So is that a multi-year contract then, or?
Um, we don't have contracts with that.
But they agreed to serve us, definitely. Do you have any other stones you can find?
No, we're still looking for a historian.
And a bus driver?
And a bus driver, we're still looking for.
Do you have any applications on the bus driver?
No, we haven't.
Okay. I got off.
And if you know anyone that would like to drive a bus, there's new rules going to be implemented February, in February of next year, that there's, you're going to have to document drive time, classroom time. So right now is the time to get your license, if you're interested in getting a bus license, before February. After February, it's going to be pretty tough.
Okay. All right, that was, that was the other question I had, thank you. Okay, we'll do the, the plan, John.
Anybody have questions on the bills? Paul, I answered everything you needed.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Again, motion to approve the bills.
I'm going to approve those.
Second.
Johns?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Madera? I mean, I'm sorry, Wald?
Yes.
I do have two open enrollment forms, numbers one oh six and one oh seven coming in. Nate Johnson suddenly moved into Surrey, into our district.
Why do they have to open enrollment if they're residents in the district? That's why I was going to be thought.
Well, to be honest, at the time they filed the paperwork before, before this board meeting, they weren't living here, but in October, they moved into our district.
Okay, so that's not happened to them.
They live in our district now, but they weren't at the time.
Okay.
So that's why we did the paperwork. But now it's probably not necessary.
So we're in the third of the district.
Okay. So I think we'll stick to that one. Um, Lady L? Anything for Todd? All right, Prince Hall?
I just want to add a little bit on what Fanny was talking about, some of the new things we have. On, it was October fourth, we took eleven kids in for the first ever time for an F M A contest. We had, like I said, we had eleven kids. They did pre-contest, parlor practice procedure and public speaking. And we actually came up with a few silver ribbons, which, when you're going into something like that with you're against Delva and Max and some of those guys that have had it for years and years, to come up with a silver in anything, I, I was just really excited for the kids. So it's just, like she said, another new opportunity that's never been here before, so pretty happy about that. The other thing I just want to talk about quick, we got an in-service today. It was through the R A A, we did a poverty simulation. I'd be interested to hear from staff. I, I thought it went really well, probably one of the best in-services I've been to for a long time, so it would be interesting to hear what, what they have to say about. But some of the things we've been doing here.
Thank you. Any question? Want to, I'm finished with this.
Mr. Green, just wanted to get the AC policies. Anybody want to look at one more time? This is the one on this remanagement that we have at the long board meeting.
We're required to have that policy, right?
Yes, we are required to have that policy.
Second reading of board policy A, B, C, I gave to you last month. It's about non-discrimination and anti-prison policy. We just need a second reading and approval. It's about non-discrimination and anti-arrestment policy, we just need a second reading approval.
Uh, can you just have it down? I.
This is the board policy. I don't have that.
Oh, you don't have the new one?
I don't like it until you ask.
Okay, you don't have the new one, so, I don't. Besides, I just told you that. So, I thought I looked at it last night. But I don't see it there. I wouldn't like, I mean, I know it's a very policy, but is someone like to read it again, or we?
You don't have that? That's okay, I'll go get it.
Yeah, if you don't mind, we'll just move on to.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, exit interview. I think we just needed, is that our uncommissioned list, because we started talking about our processes, left board meeting, and we were going to finish that up, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we looked at best time, just if anybody wanted to look at it, offer insights otherwise, you're going to just add, um, that the top portion is optional and the graphics, um, just creating an actual with the rightest basis actually for it.
Right.
Nobody has any other comments on the board. Why is that?
And then I think we're still talking about what to use then.
Oh, yeah, where they'd be held, I think we.
Where they'd be held, yeah.
They decided that would be in the office.
Yeah, I think that's what I was thinking, and Mr. Pinoz was thinking.
Yep.
You were sorry with that? So, superintendent will, or not superintendent, but the board president will conduct the meeting, or the exit interview. And, um, if she can, then, or he or she can, then the vice president will conduct the interview.
Yep.
And then those will be housed in superintendent office. Okay. So, I didn't have any changes to the form. Except to add that it's a top part, the optional.
Sure.
The top part as far as, what part would be optional?
Which is any demographic information they have on their share.
Even their name?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's a, the whole form's optional.
Right, sure.
Participate in all of so.
Sure, but if they wanted to say something, they're not necessarily without their name.
They could, yeah, that, that should be our, or I think we want to truth on that, really, absolutely. I mean, most of the time it's because they're, they're leaving, so we won't have the problem with their name.
I mean, I think it should be mandatory for their name to be on there, if they wanted to be kept confidential after that, that's a whole other ball of whacks, but I mean, if you're taking the time out to give the exit interview for somebody, that very least they could do, I would say would be to provide their
Well, I would, I would.
Name to their comments.
I think if you make, start making things of a manager for somebody, you might have less participation in it, most people would give their name.
Yeah, my only thought is that it is public record. So, then.
There's no way to keep it any confidential.
Right, so then, people may not want to touch it, usually, but, so I think that would make prevent people from wanting to. And we can table this till next time, too?
No, I think, I mean, I agree, I just um, ju- basically, I just researched the thing, and what I found was that even if an employee wants visitor comments about harassment or other conditions to remain confidential, the company has a legal obligation to investigate prompt, prompt remedial action, so, I mean, it, basically, it's exactly what you said to me. With the, the one condition that they can ask to have confidential or sealed.
Right, they can't.
Or no, are we approving that?
That would, I guess, I think we should probably have a motion to approve that form.
Motion to approve.
Do we already have the form?
No, the minutes from the last meeting said that, you know, like administration over, and I don't think either one of them if they wanted to as well.
Oh, because they both, I both. Sorry. Okay. All right, well, we had discussion on that, I guess we'll visit that in a minute, um, same, same thing's going to go with the sports co-op. Maybe we can move to new business. No, I have a, sorry, sports, service sports co-op, I need a, considering here for that. Okay, so I think we can move to the new business. While we come back for number items two, three, four, and five, that we need administration for. Um, business manager evaluation. I printed that out last night, yeah. Bring it with? Oh, perfect, thank you. Um, so first we have the job description, so this, thank you Twilight for providing this for us. This came from, directly from the Toronto School Board Association, I found it to be appropriate. Um, obviously, we need to, um, put our our information in there and then make any changes that we feel are appropriate, so. Any thoughts or comments on, I was thinking change, I guess you have electronic, but.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find it, I looked it over earlier, I didn't know, probably.
No.
All of the other school districts basically adopted the same one, so like you said, just made it, um, official.
Mm-hmm. Um, as far as qualifications, I think, um, requiring that it was a center certification, you know, within a year after employment, is that a reason, I don't know if law and that certification process?
Right, um, it's a lot of work, I know that, I don't know, I have never checked into it.
Oh, you didn't get certified?
Oh, okay, that was my news since the last time I was there.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And it costs money, I don't know how much it is.
Okay, so, I don't find out, we're not going to meet that requirement, but at this point, but I think we can figure out in the future. Um, so the only qualifications then are a high school diploma. Um, reports to Surrey School Board, and there is no one that, uh, that the business manager in this school is supposed to be supervising.
Will be supervising, yeah.
Yep. Um, job goal admits to business affairs at the Surrey District in order to provide the best educational services with financial resources available. As far as essential functions, prepare process and seven eight year rule, I do feel like we should have that on there. I'm sorry, that was a? Prepare process with the seven, the seven eight year rule. Just add that, it was an optional.
Okay.
And then nothing changed, anything else on there? As far as other duties, assistant school board is notified board of meetings, yes, that one is optional, and I do think that we need that one on there. Um, provide notice of all meetings of the board, including committee meetings, budgetary and then community meetings, I think that that is something that we are, I mean, our business manager can do when it is required. So, those two optional policies proceeds would be in there. Um, risk management call for bids and pushing insurance agents, insured agencies, I don't think that's in our purview.
Yeah, I think we're just agreeing.
Yeah, I think so, too. Um, determine insurable values of buildings and contents, I would not say that either. Fire lost planes, file lost plane connection reports.
Yeah, I think that's.
You got, I actually am the person that calls the insurance company.
Okay. And then maintain inventory of district equipment, that data's needed, probably yes to that one, I don't think that.
Mr. Burden is? Mr. Burden keeps track of all the computers and
Okay.
Sorry.
Don't, I appreciate the information. Um, recommend insurance, I don't think you want to add the last two optional ones, recommend insurance policies for casualty, liability, fidelity, and school indemnity, or responsible claims against the school, neither of those would be appropriate, I don't believe. You want?
Nope, I agree.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Um, personnel management. Administer all employee benefits, policies, programs, and make recommendations to the board regarding changes or policies and programs. Um, I believe you're administering it, I don't know about, um, I would, I would remove and recommendation, and make recommendations to the board, I feel like that would probably come from the superintendent. You know, who would speak to, yeah, and then he would speak to us either, so. Um, we will leave on there, administer all employee benefits, policies and programs, remove and make recommendations to the board regarding changes to these policies and programs. Maintain permanent records of district employees and maintain personnel files, following law and district record retention schedule, probably yes on that one. Maintain records of all personnel leaves, yeah. Um, provide information on working conditions, benefits, policy and procedures. What do you think?
What is it?
Provide information on working conditions, benefits, policy and procedures.
I do benefits.
And leaves.
Policy and procedures.
Yeah, I don't know about working conditions.
Oh, right. I mean, while we have up about administer all employee benefits, this is more making sure that the benefits are relevant, we want. And I think that's more of a superintendent.
I think you would probably just add assist with.
Oh, okay, yeah, assist with providing that, you said. Right, resource data for negotiations, yes. Um, process workforce, safety and insurance, claims and payments, yes. Um, provide for in-service training on benefits, I don't think that's something we're doing, but, um, that would definitely fall under your purview. Process on athletic claims and payments, and I believe that one would be, yeah, also.
Just go ahead, if we read something that you're just not doing, you'll know already.
Yeah, and a lot of those things I do with the superintendent, like the athletic claim, that's something that I would discuss with, you know, we would do it together. You know, we would feel that if we do it together, I don't feel like it's solely my, um, you know, not, not my responsibility, but it's, it's his input as well.
But ultimately, you're making sure that an athletic claim gets filed.
Correct, I mean, if it gets filed, and then, but they send a questionnaire, and it's usually like three or four pages, and so some of the questions are I, more relative for the superintendent to answer than myself.
But you're the one actually making sure that gets done.
Correct. I'm the one that's filing the paperwork, that's correct.
Okay. And I think that's all.
Like, just like, with his assistance, yes.
Yes, okay. Um, I think that ends it then. So, I, I think that we probably, because this was a lot of information, we probably, I think you have a good idea, and we should review it next time, would you guys like?
Would you like me to go in and put our names and do all that, and then send you an updated copy, and like take up the sample, but you know?
I think that would be bad.
I, I think it'd be beneficial, also, um, just any comments that you might have, you'd like us to know about, like, this is just not something I do.
Things on there, I don't, I mean, there's certain things on there that I do do that are not.
Sure, yeah, well, yeah, if you need to, to give us kind of a better insight.
Yes.
Okay. So, um, I think we'll revisit, we'll revisit that then at the next meeting. Um, as far as the evaluation goes, we do need to start doing that, as far as I know, we've never done one, and I think they've asked for one from me before, you know, mentioned to me to equalize that one, an evaluation. Um, and it's something that I think it was starting for, for all of our staff. So, um, you know, I think if you take away about lunch and learning, or webinar that I went to, was really that it's a work in progress, and so we need to, you know, it's not, evaluations once a year, but really, it should be a process that's continuously done, so that no, nothing is a surprise. And so, setting goals and, um, is an important piece of that. I don't know if we, you know, if we need a starting point, do we evaluate first and then set goals, or do we just set goals and then evaluate? You know, evaluate and then make a, make a process, or setting goals after that.
Well, I don't, and I might be wrong, so correct me if I am wrong, but I would think one of us knows exactly everything he was taught to us, so I think it'd be appropriate for, set a goal for, really find out what it looks like in the questions, what else she's doing, superintendent. I would think it'd be very fair for us to start establish objectives without really understanding what it is, on this whole country, day to day.
I don't think it would be fair for us to set a goal, but she can set a goal for herself, and, um.
That's a good point.
We can just help to, or, you know, help to make sure that she reaches that goal.
Based upon the evaluation, or based upon the job description?
Yeah, so I think goal is, um, the evaluation and then the goal for sure. Can be just, I mean, as soon as it's ready.
Um, I agree. So, I wondered if we could maybe start with even a self-evaluation then. So, once we have the job description set up, then do, you know, have her, to allow the self-evaluations, um, based upon this job description, and then have her set goals for herself, and we're gone from there?
Yep.
All right. So, we will continue then, this again, uh, next meeting. All right, so, um, here's the AAC poll, thank you.
So, this is required language from the state, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, we're just making it our own, we're making it our own.
That's right, okay.
Do we have it?
We have it all underneath.
It's on my computer, that's my fault, you know.
So, um, do we have this part, the board shall create an informal and formal discrimination harassment complaint filing procedure?
Yes.
Do we have that? Do, what about this part, um, district employees must receive training on their reporting duties, do we have that, do we have headline violation?
Yes, you do.
Training? Okay.
The ball waters headline, coordinators have training, that's a training issue.
But it said all district employees must receive training on their reporting duties?
Yep, yep, all those that are, have the duties, that have been trained, all employees, yes.
And who's our grievance coordinator?
Put that in line.
Yep.
Put them in this, and all those names were in the one that you did last meeting.
Oh, okay.
Last one, yes.
I will send you a copy of that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
So that you can confirm your thoughts on that.
All right, look, for our motion to, uh, approve policy AAC.
Motion to approve policy AAC.
I'll second.
I'll second.
I'll second. Johns?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Wald?
Yes.
All right, um, the AAC. The AC interview, we... The Sergey Sawyer Sports Club, I was brought, it was brought to my attention that... If we, there is a possibility that if we co-op with Sawyer for football, we may end up having to play eleven man instead of nine man, which we're already doing. And I think, obviously, that's a big concern, so I want to consider helping to check on that before we approve that.
So we did, they just released all the new information as projected for next year, I believe they can file on the fifteenth of October. As of right now, we are playing nine man next year, we opted down, we're in that spot. We are the second largest team in nine man, second here, we're really, right to the top. So, how the rule works, I looked this up today, is if you were in the bottom twenty-five percent of the eleven, if we moved up, we'd go to eleven, if you're in the bottom twenty-five, as far as numbers, you can opt down. There is restrictions that say you could not have made the playoffs in the higher division, which we have not made the playoffs in the higher division, so that would penalize us. So it just, it's kind of a numbers game, it's not a solid thing, it does move, there are teams like, I believe, I mean, there's teams that have less students than we do, and they have opted up to play eleven man. So just, so it's kind of a moving scale, to stay exactly where we would be would be very, very hard.
What about, so when do we approve that co-op for football, and when does that have to be approved?
It has to be approved by the state playoff game, which is November ten to twelve, somewhere in there.
And so for next year, no matter if we approve it or not approve it, we're gonna, we are able to play nine man, we've already chosen that.
We're locked in nine man, that is right now, we're locked in nine man.
And so if we approve it for the sports club for next year, that will not affect anything, it cannot affect anything, or is it possible that it will affect the following year?
It could possibly affect the following.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Correct.
Are we scheduled for above man in two years?
As of right now, yes, that's where they have us, we're gonna have to fill up that paperwork next year to opt down.
Okay, and so we have to approve, so right now, the sports co-op pushes us to eleven man, and there's, in two years.
We're actually, we're projected to be eleven man in two years without the Sawyer numbers, but Sawyer numbers are not even included, our current numbers.
And we have the option of...
We will, we'll still be at the bottom number, or I should say the bottom twenty-five percentage-ish, we should be able to opt down, but the other problem is we gained eighty students this year, or fifty-five students this year. So, and our classes are getting bigger, the class next year coming from sixth grade is not a very large class, so that's helping us out a little bit. But every other class we have in our school is thirty-plus, sometimes up to forty, so we're getting bigger, it just might be, unfortunately, we might be stuck, so there might not be anything we can do.
But is there, is there... It, by, are we committed right now to co-op with Sawyer for football in the next year?
With the agreement we had, yes, we could, we, I'm sure we can still get out of that, but...
When was that high school activities deadline, that was by playoff game of this year?
So, we both signed the initial agreement, and then we brought it over to work, and we both approved it.
That included football?
That, I believe, was everything, okay, so there, there's paperwork that has to be filled out by the end of every sports season for the following. Like if we were gonna co-op with somebody for elsewhere next year, it has to be done by the end of this football season.
Okay. And so that co-op, we don't know if that will push us to eleven man, or be the reason why we have to do eleven man in two years?
Yeah, I agree with that information, I just don't.
So if we choose not to co-op with them for next year, we get out of that agreement? Do we have the option of co-op being with them at a later point, or?
Absolutely, well, as I, you know, that's, I guess, something we'd have to talk to them about. I, I would guess that next year we can, when we see their numbers and see what they bring, and the other thing is, they don't count nine through twelve kids, they count seven through ten kids, because that's your numbers coming up.
Seven through ten?
Yeah. Because our seniors will be gone next year, so that class is irrelevant, starts to account.
But why didn't they move to eleven then?
Well, they generally go on a two-year basis, and that's why they go seven to ten. The other part, when they figure out the enrollments, the first step is they come, all the kids, seven through ten, all the boys. And then, they actually take this number and multiply it, and there's a formula for free and reduced meals. So, this school, from my understanding, has been, not that we don't have people apply, we just don't have people that actually fill up the paperwork and apply for free and reduced meals. There are so many things in education that that formula affects, there are schools that are our size, when I come to the state with this federal money that we got, we got about eight hundred thousand. Schools our size got twice that, they got one point six, because they have patrons that are filling out this paper and getting turned in, and it's helped, that's, I mean, eight hundred thousand dollars would help convince them. So, I did not, I did not know this also affected the guidelines for football, but I guess it does, so that's something that can also help us out with the future, because that would actually lower our number, even if our number was eighty, if we have enough paperwork about people on that free introduced, it might bring it down to seventy-two, that might help us out.
Okay. Well, I am concerned about having being forced into eleven man, and I feel like it's kind of a risk, I don't know, and, you know, as much as I wanna help out Sawyer without, you know, we may end up there either way, but I surely don't want that to be the reason we're forced into something.
It sounds like we're on our way there, and I think they hired, correctly, their whole high school was fifteen students? Right now, nine through twelve are fifteen, fifteen today, and junior high was not, I don't remember the exact number, it wasn't very clear, it was like eight. I don't know the boy to girl ratio.
I don't think they're gonna push us past the bottom twenty-five of the eleven, that we could go up and down, or, could, whatever the word was, reduce ourselves.
I think a bigger concern might be, and we'll talk about this at the vision committee, and quite a lot you can back me on, is the city has been approached by the, to go over in Silver Springs, and they're playing in several offices, and then several twin homes, and then multifamily living after that, so... And that's like a very short-term goal for them? So it is, I mean, like I said. And, I mean, with that, if, if the whole plan falls into place like it was supposed to when it was first brought up, I mean, then there's the possibility the school, I mean, that's just a whole, another ballack, too, but...
So, maybe, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I guess maybe a good question, I'd like to answer, maybe I could call someone at the North Coast High School Activities tomorrow, and ask a question, if we co-op with Sawyer for next year, and we get the projected numbers, and we go, oh, because of their six students, it's gonna push us over, will we have the option to get out of that co-op? And, you know, maybe we're fine for next year, but the year after, maybe we tell Sawyer it's not gonna work.
Yeah, the year after, you have more and more students coming.
Exactly.
We have doubles, every elementary class, so coming down is dream, but it means, or they'd be pushed into the eleven anyway.
I understand, oh, I guess maybe I misunderstood, because, so the last playoff, the playoff game, right, is when, because it was gonna be before the next board meeting?
No, it's the, it's the state tournament.
Oh, it's the state tournament?
Yeah, state championship game, that is the last day you could apply for a co-op.
And what's that?
Yeah, it's right around that second weekend in November.
November twelfth, that would be, Kristen, did you say November twelfth? November twelfth. And what's the next board meeting?
November tenth.
November tenth.
Okay, yes, I get it. So, yeah, I need good information, also, I guess, maybe I misunderstood, so if we co-op this year, we're not worried about what the effects of that are in next year, but we're worried about the effects of that on two weeks?
Correct. Next year, we're, unless something crazy happens over the next two days, which they don't figure it out, we are, we're going to be nine man. So, and we've already, we're actually, we're already opted down, so we're not going to, so we'll be nine man.
Okay, and then we have the next board meeting to kind of finalize, okay, okay. Hopefully, that will work then. Okay, so something else to table for next year? Next meeting, next meeting, morning, uh... Were we finished with that AC interview? Oh, we wanted more administrations, or if they had any thoughts or concerns on the executive.
No, we don't, I just, I would think that after the executive meeting, that you visit us as well.
Okay. The AIC are gonna be formed, they won't be necessarily shared with you, but you know, I'd be happy to visit you a lot at this point.
Absolutely.
Okay. Hey, school vision committee, in Q, can I, can I, do I have anything else to say?
I'm just gonna stick to, I think, actually, I'll maybe even look into that tomorrow, I'm checking everybody, I'm seeing Tuesday evening next week, or, or, nope, Tuesday's a sports night, so Wednesday would be fine for me.
Sounds good, thank you. And the call to our board committee?
Yeah, I'm trying to develop some preliminary objectives in those meetings scheduled, just so I can get it out to the teachers and employees that we can jump something.
Okay.
Trust me, it'll be fun. So hopefully, we'll get that down this month, get it solidified, so.
Okay, so I think the school vision committee has members, you're still waiting for, to find out your committee members, okay. All right. We did the recent kind of your evaluation, so to the... No, we added that onto the time for board meeting, so that was already planned, I was asking in there. So the annual report, do anyone have any questions, or Tyler, on that? Okay, if there's no questions, then I'll issue a motion to approve the annual report.
I'll make a motion to approve that annual report.
I'll second it.
John?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
All right, time for board meetings. I was asked to ask the board if they'd be willing to have the meeting a little later, so that while the parents were working in lineups to attend the meeting. My, I had a couple concerns, you know, the original request was for six o'clock, my concern was, six o'clock is really exciting, administrators stay really late. Sometimes on board meetings, they're running a couple hours, and so, you know, that makes them have more than their twelve-hour day. But I do understand, and I do value the input of, you know, the parents, so I was wondering if, my thoughts were, if we could maybe postpone the meeting, or not postpone the meeting, but have meetings at maybe five-thirty, and then along that line, just continue posting them on YouTube, so that, you know, five-thirty should allow parents to attend, hopefully, if they're interested, and then postpone.
So I did it in the, I was a volunteer today, and they considered that they have, and when I got done, I thought to myself, well, this is a very long day for this thing, because obviously, you guys basically just stayed here, and then came to the meeting tonight, so your first point, I guess I would agree more with, and, I mean, I, I think we should probably respect our administrators, and see what their thoughts are, if they're willing to serve, like you said, the meetings aren't short, so even packing on an extra thirty to sixty minutes is...
That's a bit the time to the board meeting.
Well, I only meet once a month, so I would rather take care of them and make sure that our school is in a good spot.
Yeah, sorry. I, you know, I appreciate the comments, and it's hard for me to get here at five, and sometimes I will make it, but I also want to stick around an extra hour, I mean, some of our teachers, administrators, outside of town, it's, it's not, they're just going off the grid, so I, I would just, I'd rather just leave where it's at.
No, trust me, I also have to leave work a half hour early, but, I mean, it's, it's cool.
Okay. Well, then, to Daniel's point, then, continuation of posting the meeting online.
Yeah, I don't see a purpose of it, this is actually a year and a half, I think, you're most obscene, but if you combine every meeting, the people that have shown an interest in it, no good comments from them, I don't think anybody's watching it, anyway, so I don't know what the point is, if they wanna come, and we're not under the COVID restrictions, that was a temporary measure, it's just adding extra burden on the tech guys, I don't see anything anymore.
I do think it's getting watched, I am getting, I am getting comments from public, so I do think it's being watched, but I look forward that they attend.
I mean, some school districts have their school board meetings in the morning, we're gonna, so, I mean, to have it a catapaxi, it's not convenient, but it's not convenient for anyone, so... I, I mean, no, I mean, is that what we're still on?
Well, we're talking about posting as a meeting, but I think people that even aren't interested in postponing the time, or making the time a little later, what about posting the, the board meeting online?
Um, yeah, does that cost us any money?
No, ma'am.
Is it a hassle for you to do?
It, a little bit, but it's bearable. It just, it's hard to hear out here in the audience, it's impossible to actually hear out here in the audience, you guys are turning to each other to discuss things, when I do the iPad, I turn up the audio gain about four hundred percent, that's why, I can hear better when I get home after I get that done, than I can hear here. Your last board meeting had fifty-one views.
Thank you. So, I don't know, I'm not, I don't hear one.
If it's not convenient, I don't think we should change either, either one of the things.
It's not a emergency.
So we're gonna do it at this, I know, okay. We'll leave the time of the board meetings at five o'clock, and we'll continue to post them. Last item is threat level chart of communication, you know, I think that we are really lucky to have Daniel on the board with us, and so I'm hoping that he can help us with that, we do have these emergency procedures. Unfortunately, we've had some things happen in the past month that have, you know, created some concern, and I think one of the things that we really don't address in emergency procedures, how we're gonna communicate those things to the public, especially to parents that have students in the school, so... My thought was, is, you know, I really like the idea of those triangles, where you have, you know, the most dire circumstances at top, and, and the most, have highest level threat for its lesser threat at the bottom, and then exactly how you communicate, or, you know, exactly what is done, and how those threats are communicated to the people that it matters to most. But I do, either way, if we adopt something like that, or in this, address how we're going to communicate to parents, I think either way, we do need to propose some way that we're going to address parents.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, I'd like to work on the emergency procedures, and how we're going to communicate if there has been a threat to the parents.
Mr. Grady, do we not have a way of doing that?
Just in our emergency procedure book.
Just in our emergency procedure book?
Yeah.
That's what we follow. And doesn't, doesn't have anything chilling with having or communicating with parents in here.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, if you're asked to follow...
I just think you're a valuable resource in this area.
So am I, too. Yeah, no, if you want me to look at it, or the committee, yeah, we can look at it and figure out a good way to communicate, just scrub and make sure.
Yeah, I mean, I know there was concern with that. There were threats, and, um, parents weren't notified, so... And I don't think I don't hear the idea that we have any...
It also depends on the threat and the seriousness of it. There's a spectrum of threat information, and especially in the school, confidence in my students, sometimes they're telling me, so I guess we rely on the teachers and administrators to make a judgment call as to whether or not it's a credible threat. You know, what to be familiar with. Yeah, absolutely. If you're asking me to look at it, be happy to. Be happy to have a committee and go over it. I don't wanna get to the point where we're trying to communicate to the parents every time when some kid says something stupid, or that they shouldn't have said. I mean, this is gonna parent turmoil. It's gonna be communications over, there's probably not a day that goes by that you want something, anything in the school. Yeah, if that's your, like, committee, you're willing to do it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't know if you want to help the committee, which you're welcome to, but I would like you to look it over and see if there is...
Well, there's also, I mean, for...
How we can...
Police say, you don't wanna over-communicate either, because especially on non-credible threats, it gets that person, I mean, it encourages that behavior. So, I mean, if it is credible, with respect, like I said, that's what we rely heavily on the administration and the teachers to decide.
We don't have anything, you hear that talk, how to determine whether a threat is credible, and I don't know that there even the training.
I think that the police department is giving them, giving them proper training.
Yeah.
So, I would, um, when I was informed of the, the possible situation or in the situation, I immediately called Kevin Howe, Chief of Police. And, um... And the response that I got from him was the exact response that I got from our superintendent that evening. And just reading just a small portion of the email that he sent out that night, the order in which they have to follow, the parents and the board members are not right at the same time. So I don't...
There is no established order of doing anything.
And this order is the way they would handle the situation.
There's an excellent article by Supervisor Special Agent FBI, Behavioral Analysis, a very helpful tool, that talks about responding to school threats, threats in the playground, that talks about the spectrum of behavior, and, you know, it goes into in-depth about the type of person, you know, the different things to look at when a threat is communicated, especially if you know the person, and it's not, it's not called in anonymously, or it's credible, or it's specific, that kind of stuff. So, and then it also talks a little bit about what do you do? Do you evacuate a school for every incident? The answer is overwhelmingly, obviously, you don't do that. Do you communicate to everybody that something happened? It encourages behavior when you take it to an extreme, and we make a mistake if we treat every individual incident as it's the same. So, you know, I like, I like Chief Howe. I've talked to him personally. I'm very respectful, man. I'm not sure in the context if he has all the information, or if he's taken the time to look at it. I mean, the knee-jerk reaction is, if somebody threatens to shoot a school, does this, that, and of course, yeah, absolutely, if it is. So, but that might not necessarily be the case.
Well, my point is that, that we don't expect our school staff to be out protecting our students and teachers with guns. I mean, there's the appropriate personnel to handle that situation. I mean, there's the fire department, police department.
Right, the waste, the waste of time.
No, what I'm saying, though, is that protocol was followed for the situation that had, that was, that happened. It was Facebook that was wrong, so...
I can see it on Facebook, so... That's the context.
If you would.
Yeah, I think, I think you're both right, but, you know, like, determining the credibility is not really in here. We have, you know, everything is so black and white. It's, you know, bomb threat, and there's, you do this. Well, there's no determining whether a bomb threat is credible or not credible in this. And so...
I mean, yeah, no, you're right.
So I think we're missing a crucial piece of there. So if we follow this to the letter...
Okay.
...in a general situation, we think are not real.
If it's all possible, I would like to meet with Daniel, maybe go through this. This, like you said, is a valuable resource, so they can sit down and say, "Hey, how can we better our emergency policy and our community?" That's what they wanna do. So, like, you're willing to do that, Daniel, great.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And I would highly recommend a police officer.
And I would like to say that as well. We were very close with the Surrey police, and we have them almost daily coming through our school.
Thank you for doing that, though.
I think that also...
I mean, keeping a fire chief.
Yeah, no, that's actually right in line with our process of becoming more involved in the community as well. So that's nice and, I think, it's amazing.
Oh, yes, I just have a question. So for when you guys go through this, are you as well going to go through the punishment and publish it out so people know, like, if your child does this, this is what's gonna happen? And we're at fault for, we're actually wanting to recommend our children for having this behavior? Or are we just going to allow them to come back into school, like, do all this? Like, are we taking appropriate steps, and if they need help, are we helping them? Are we sending them to get evaluation and mental health, or are we trying to do everything in-house? Just asking.
Well, we definitely give them appropriate help that they, and we can't discuss what we give these students.
If you're gonna work on how you're going to deal with the situations, are we also going to work on how we're going to discipline, and are we gonna follow through with that? That's what I'm asking. Because it's not black and white, whether you get expelled or not expelled, or whatever happens, or we just have a conversation about it, and then we send them a train back to school. So at some point, we have to take them seriously. And if we keep just throwing it out, I just think one day, we may be pushing the water. That's all I'm saying.
I think that goes right along with that idea of making sure it's a credible, credible threat, and then the punishment to align with if it's a credible threat, or if it's not a credible threat, there would be a different set of punishments, I imagine.
But if you threaten someone with their lives, is it not considered a threat?
I think that's what I'd like to discuss. So I think that will all fall under here, about credible versus not credible, and just make it, because this is so black and white, that it really doesn't allow for any of that gray area. And so I hope that that...
And I hope that I did call in last week, earlier this week, I don't even remember what day it was, and the police have been coming into school and doing their job. So I am happy with the things that are happening. Some things are falling through the cracks, and there are people that are aware of things that are happening in the school, and they're trying to deal with it. But we have to have rules, and we have to follow them. That's all I'm saying.
I agree. Okay, with that, then, we have our next board meeting, November 10th, at 5:00. Take a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.